Good evening, welcome to the March 18th, 2024 meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees, beginning here at 6:00 PM. Our first item is to call to order, which we have just done. The second item is Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand and face the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item three is Public Comments on Agenda Items, and Monica, I don't believe anybody's signed up tonight. Okay. Item four is the Superintendent's Recognition. Our first one will be the Alumni Spotlight, Mrs. Parks. And members, will you come in front of the dais now?
Carmen, if you would like to come and join the board up front, Dr. Ott, her plaque is up there. Carmelita Brittany DeVilla graduated Temple High School in 2007. After high school graduation, she attended Temple College and earned two Associate's Degree, an Associate's of Applied Science Criminal Justice, and an Associate's of Arts in 2011, and then continued earning her Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice in 2013 from Texas A&amp;M University, Central Texas. She currently serves as an Officer with the Temple Police Department, where she was hired in 2014 and graduated the Temple Police Academy in 2015. She has worked the night shift for several years and has trained multiple, is it nine years? Is that right? Nine years, and has trained multiple new recruits. Carmen was critically injured in the line of duty in November 2016 when she was struck by a drunk driver on the side of I-35 as she helped another officer with a traffic stop. Like with all things, she did not let this keep her down, and she came back from her injuries even stronger than before. Carmen's perseverance and determination is equally matched by her generosity and kindness. She has been a steadfast supporter of the Special Olympics, various cancer awareness groups, and the 9/11 memorial climb. She has been honored by the Exchange Club's Officer of the Year Award for helping to save a life, and is UMHB's Hometown Hero. She is a proud wife and mother and embodies the qualities of the police force. And it's okay, he can be noisy. No, 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 he can be noisy, yes. Yep, he just wants to participate, that's okay. No. She embodies the qualities of the police force, integrity, honor, and dedication. Her favorite memory while at Temple High School was the knowledge and dedication and caring heart that Ms. Goldman and her pre-AP geography teacher showed towards her students and to further their education, as well as the rivalry of the sold-out Temple versus Belton football games. When asked what being a Wildcat means to her, she said, "Going to Temple High prepared me for the real world and provided me with great perspectives for life after high school." The quote, "Once a Wildcat, always a Wildcat," has always been a part of me, so much so that after I graduated college, I returned back to Temple where I proudly serve my community that I call home. I am proud to call myself a Wildcat and bleed blue. Well, Carmen, we are equally proud to call you a Wildcat and are pleased to have you in our Alumni Spotlight. Congratulations.
You want to hold that for me?
Oh, yes. So I recently got married in October of last year, so I'm now, that is Dad, I am now Carmen Escavell. We just had a brand-new baby on January 5th, so he's only about two and a half months. Today was my first day back to work, so it was actually quite difficult, leaving him at daycare all day long, because I've been used to picking him up like at 1:00 in the afternoon, just because I didn't want to spend all the day away from him. So today was a little bit of a struggle, so coming here and seeing him. I got the baby's clothes ready this morning for Dad, but I greatly appreciate this so much, and I apologize for not making it the last time.
No, no, we understand, that is perfectly fine.
This is my mom right here, Juanita, she works for Temple at the high school.
Yes, she does.
And the four other individuals are my nieces and nephews that all go to Temple schools as well.
First of all, I just want to say, congratulations, you know, people that received the Alumni Spotlight, they're truly role models for our youth, and we have some of our youth here today. And you're a really big deal, the police chief is here, actually. And so that's a big deal. And of course, you have a fantastic family here. And the other thing I'd say is, you know, listening to everything Christine was reading, you are truly the dictionary definition of selflessness. I mean, you truly serve the community, and we are grateful for that, and we want to hold you up in front of all of our youth and everyone else. Congratulations to you.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Chief Reynolds, would you like to come up here with a photo, too?
Well, and her husband?
And the baby.
Husband?
Yes, husband, come on up, and baby.
All family, yeah.
We do know that it's a team effort to do these things. So family can come up, we'll get pictures. And you'll always remember this as your first day of work back, huh?
Yes. Congratulations.
I think there's a record broken, that may be the youngest individual to be up here with us.
I think that is the youngest attendee we've ever had, wow! And we do appreciate you guys being here, but please know, we also, you guys are welcome to sneak out, because I know you have other things to do as well. So thank you, we're glad you were here.
Our next item is State Wrestlers.
All right, I'm going to have Coach Clark come on up, and he's going to help with these medals. We have three Temple High School wrestlers that have qualified for UIL State Wrestling Tournament this year. They qualified, and that tournament was February 16th and 17th. First, we're going to do Senior Joel Aguilar. Joel, come on up and get your medal. He competed in the state competition for the second straight year after becoming the first Wildcat wrestler to medal in the state tournament with a fifth-place finish in the 2023 tournament. Joel, this year competed in the boys' 138-pound class after winning the regional meet in that weight class and finished sixth in this year's state tournament. On the girl's side, we have Junior Marissa Ruiz. Marissa, come on up. She competed in the 152-pound class after posting a fourth-place finish in the regional meet. She is the first female wrestler to qualify for state in Temple history. And then we also have Senior Rebecca Terry, who qualified for the state competition as an alternate in the 107-pound class after posting a fifth-place finish at regionals. And of course, we have Coach Clark here with us as well, and we are truly, truly so very proud of you guys. I know we are saying goodbye to Joel and Marissa, Joel and Rebecca, but Marissa, you'll be back with us next year, and so we'll look forward to continue watching you, and best of luck to our seniors, and we appreciate you guys and all that you've done, so thank you very much.
On behalf of the school board, we're just so proud of y'all. Y'all have come such a long way in such a short period of time. It's amazing what this program has done, and y'all's energies and efforts, we all have taken y'all. So congratulations. At this time, we'll do photos, and Coach, would you like to come up here, too, for the photos?
Congratulations to Coach Clark as well.
Yes. Coach Clark, yeah, definitely.
Appreciate you, great job.
Yeah, I can stand right here.
How many years is this pro for?
This is our...
Eight years. Time flies. And Moms and Dads, I promised you I would hold them up here, so you guys come on up and take pictures, we will hold them as long as we need to. I'm looking for thumbs up, everybody good? Okay.
There's a lot of students to introduce their family, but you make a lot of sacrifices to make sure that they're where they need to be.
Okay. I have a lot of family, so to the left, I have my grandma and my grandpa, and then I have my dad, my aunt, and my mom, my brother behind her, I have my uncle right next to him, and my other brother Eli.
I have my dad right there, behind the photographer.
Taking pictures.
But that's all I have.
No.
And then I have my mom, the one that dropped the phone.
All right, congratulations, guys, we're so proud of you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations again.
And y'all, y'all are welcome to jet on out, okay? Congratulations, and y'all are welcome to jet on out or stay.
Our next item is the Superintendent's Leadership Award.
Okay. Patty, you're going to be mad at me, because I kind of fibbed. I did. So can you come on up? Thank you. So Patty is here because she thought we were recognizing the historical marker that we just received for Sampson, at Sampson Howard, and we are going to recognize that, but we're actually really here to recognize Patty, which she doesn't like recognition, but that's why we're here, and that's why I had to fib, because she wouldn't have come probably otherwise. But leadership, leadership is the attitude assumed by those with a vision to raise expectations, who are committed to achieving a goal, and whose conviction inspires others through enthusiasm and optimism to reach that goal. Patricia Benoit's passion for preserving the stories of our past is both contagious and unparalleled. Not only is she gifted at telling these stories, but she is also a master at uncovering stories that have almost been forgotten and giving them new life. Evidence of Patty's work has been felt across the district. Even in this room, for instance, you can see, and on this first floor, or the second floor, through all of the photos that are hanging, in many of them, you'll see in the caption that the information is courtesy of Patty Benoit. And as the person who had to go hunting for all that information, I am so glad that you did all that research to help preserve it, that you will see her fingerprints throughout the hallways here. She had already done the work, and we were just able to incorporate the stories that she compiled into our district exhibits. Most recently, the impact of Patty's historical research and archivism are on full display as we prepare to open our new elementary school. In 2019, Patty penned a Backroads article in the Temple Daily Telegram entitled "Temple Educator Led Efforts to Improve Black Schools" that told the almost-forgotten story of Cornelius Carl Sampson, who was a Temple native, teacher, and principal of Dunbar School, who went on to become a statewide leader and civil rights activist. Patty's article prompted a facility's naming nomination to be submitted to the district for Professor Sampson, and his name, along with Jean and Durwood Howard, were ultimately selected as the namesakes for the newest elementary, Temple ISD Elementary Campus that will open this fall. But Patty didn't stop there. About 18 months ago, she approached the district to ask if she could submit applications for historical markers with the State Historical Commission for Cornelius Sampson and Jean and Durwood Howard. With full district support, she pulled together extensive research and submitted these applications. One was submitted last year, and the other was submitted this month. We are pleased to announce that the initial application for Cornelius Carl Sampson has been approved. So I didn't completely lie, see, we're celebrating that. The award decisions for the Howard's application will not be made until later on this year. But Patty, as you documented in your research, Professor Sampson was attributed with the quote "deeds, not words," as he emphasized to students that it was actions that set people apart and define their beliefs. I'm not one to argue with such wisdom, but I think in your case, it gives me pause, because it is through your words that so much of our history has been preserved, because you refuse to let these stories be lost. But I guess therein lies the beauty and wisdom of Professor Sampson, as you not only have the passion to pen these stories, but also the tenacity to make sure that these stories are not forgotten and are shared. Your desire to inspire others to embrace the history around us, so that we can build on this for a better tomorrow, is what truly sets you apart. And for these reasons, and so very many more, we are so pleased to award you with the Superintendent's Leadership Award.
So as you know, we're often accused of having short memories, and I think one of the most beautiful things you can do is to carry history forward, and to carry the lives of those that have made significant impacts forward, and Patty does that. It's like they're living today, the way she researches and writes their stories, and you see it all over the community, it's not just in the school district. And I know it's a lot of hard work to dig that stuff up, it's really homework, is what it is, right? And that's something none of us really liked in school, but she really likes homework. But you do such a great job, and this award is for those that go above and beyond, and you have done that not just for the school district, but the whole entire community. So thank you so much, Patty, really appreciate it.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, well, actually, there are, I think, three reasons why my husband and I do what we do, and he is really the one who's pushed me and has guided me through all of this. So I can't really thank Weldon Cannon enough, first of all, for marrying me, and then, secondly, for being such a remarkable historian in his own right. There are three reasons why we do what we do. One is to make these undertold stories visible, to bring them out into the light, because they're lost over time as people pass away or people forget. The second reason is to make them visible, to bring them out into today and show that those past stories are part of us today, who we are. And finally, I think, especially for Cornelius Carl Sampson, is to mend the community, to mend people, to mend hearts, and to move forward. So thank you, I'm deeply touched, I didn't know this was all going to happen, so thank you, thank you again.
Well, Patty, again, on behalf of the board, if it wasn't for your story, you highlighted Mr. Sampson and brought it to our attention, and that's why one of the facilities has been named after him. That's huge for our community, like you said, for the healing, but also to recognize him and the marker, go on forever, you helped highlight that. Also want to commend your Backroads stories every Monday in the Temple Daily Telegram, that's always entertaining and knowledgeable.
Tell them to buy a subscription.
Yes. I know we're going to have some photos. Weldon, would you like to come up here and join us?
Come on up, Green.
Patty will probably never answer the phone for me again, but I'm, thank you for letting us do this.
Well, thank you both.
Congratulations.
Our next item is the Tasmic Business Recognition, United Way, Central Texas.
Stephanie and Michelle, if y'all will come on up. And Mr. Posey, you have their award right there, perfect. Businesses and organizations and nonprofits across Central Texas contribute every day to Temple ISD, and we truly rely on their support. United Way of Central Texas is one of these district partners, and we are pleased to announce that their generosity has been shown and is now recognized at the state level. The Texas Association of School Boards joins us in honoring your valuable support for our district. United Way of Central Texas supports our student, staff, and programs in a variety of ways across the community, from volunteers for Read Across America Day that we just had, to providing food and hygiene products for our homeless families, to free tax preparation for eligible families. Your fingerprints are all over this district, providing support both publicly and quietly behind the scenes, giving generously whenever a need arises. Stephanie O'Banion and Michelle Green are here with us tonight, accepting this award, and truly thank you for supporting our schools, we could not do what we do without you. Thank you.
Again, we're just so grateful for what y'all do, y'all truly have an impact on their community, you help everybody out, we have some personal experiences, we know that you've helped everybody in this community, and that is, that's such a huge thing, what y'all do.
Well, thank you.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you so much. It's certainly not a team of one or two, but all of us together, and just the work that's going on in these communities together, we're moving a needle, and we're just so grateful, and I'm a big fan of public schools, if you didn't know that. And so we are honored to also work with you all to support public schools in all ways that we can.
Thank you. Again, if you know me, you know I like to talk, so me just saying thank you is really phenomenal.
Well, I would echo what everyone's saying, and I would, I think to sum up their work, they save lives, I mean, they truly save lives, and I've had a chance to see this firsthand as well, and I know many of you have, but we're truly grateful, you really save lives, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, we appreciate you.
Our next item is the Tespra Star Awards.
So, the Temple Independent School District's Communications Department, yay, Stand Up, John and Eric, have been recognized with five gold stars and one silver star presented from the Texas School Public Relations Association this year. This year's Star Awards recognized work that was produced during the 2022-2023 school year. Temple ISD won honors in all six award categories that we entered, and the department was honored for several joint projects, and this year, very unwillingly, John and Eric both submitted an individual project, and both of their individual projects, you wouldn't be surprised, earned gold. So our gold entries were the groundbreaking announcement for Sampson Howard. It's okay, I told them they didn't have to do pictures, they begged me not to, so it's okay. Phones work, too, you know, we can take them with the phones. But the groundbreaking invitation for Sampson Howard earned gold. The John's entry for the THS BBQ Team Off to a Sizzling Start Press Release earned gold. In awe and wonder was a photo that Eric took of this precious, I think, first kindergartner or first grader with some VR goggles on, and you just, the look on her face, she is literally in awe and wonder, and that was his entry, and it's earned a gold. Our Temple ISD banners that are downstairs, those earned gold. How We Lead video, which is part of our Holdsworth Initiative from last year, that earned a gold, and our 800 Wins won a silver as a documentary video. So we competed with districts across the state with 15,000 or fewer students, so we competed with districts that were almost twice our size, and our department gets to tell our story, we get to tell your stories every day, and our final projects are seen by an ever-growing audience of stakeholders, and we're grateful that our work is recognized by our peers through these Star Awards. But behind every social media post, every press release and media interview are John and Eric, who thoughtfully and professionally craft every communication. When your work is so very public, there is a different kind of weighted responsibility built in, and I just want to commend these gentlemen on the extraordinary job that they do for Temple ISD every day. So super proud of you guys, so glad, so, so glad to have you on my team. Oh, gosh.
I'll make a few comments. Christine spent a lot of time bragging about Eric and John, and that's certainly worthy, they are, they're experts in what they do, whether it's media relations, or video, and pictures, photography, et cetera, because all that's part of telling the story. Christine leads the department, she organizes strategy, she organizes the moments, she puts all the things together for kind of this plug-and-play moment, and then it gets out to the community. And I'll tell you, I have no doubt that this is the very best communications department that this district has ever had. I mean, ever. I have absolutely zero doubt of that. Very proud of you, Christine, Eric, John, I know I try to harass y'all, because you drew the short straw there in my suite downstairs, so it gets a little difficult, but anyway, we are so grateful, I know all of us are. You know, Temple ISD has really ascended reputationally and everything else, and, man, you know, you got to have the content to do it, but you have to have the ability to deploy that content in a way that connects to people, and y'all do a fantastic job. So congratulations to all three of you, really proud of you.
And I just wanted to say, y'all have truly moved the needle for us in the community. It's just night and day, our standing in the community, and it's y'all's efforts that helped get the story out there on all different levels, and that's truly made a big difference for us. Basically, has been able to showcase and highlight the work that we've been doing, and which, you know, hadn't really been done to this level in the past. Y'all have stepped up the game for us, so thank y'all so much.
Yeah, he's really good at that, it's okay, that's all right, he's great at that. It's not going to be posted anywhere, so it's really okay, it's really, really okay. Great job, guys, so proud of you.
Thanks, great job, appreciate it, very proud of you. Donna, happy birthday.
Yes, thank you. Do you have something to add to your resume?
Oh, yes, photography.
One last? Yeah. Our next item is Farm Fresh Challenge, School Nutrition Department.
If you guys want to come on up. Temple ISD participated in the 2023 October Farm Fresh Challenge and was one of 91 districts across the state to earn Best of the Bunch, which is the highest award category. The annual event supports TDA's goal of connecting federal nutrition programs, schoolchildren, and Texas agriculture. Schools are encouraged to buy Texas-grown produce, connect students with the importance of agriculture, offer agricultural learning opportunities, and celebrate their activities on social media. And just, we have, I think this is, how many years has this been, Ian, I've lost track, I'm sorry, do we know?
Tim Wozniak has always done a really well job of participating.
Yes, as long as I remember, so at least for six years, we have earned this designation as a Best of the Bunch, and so we truly appreciate all that you guys do, not just in providing the meals, but the education behind it, and trying to help our students learn the value of nutrition and eating healthy, and so we just appreciate it, and I can't even remember how many meals it is that you serve a year, but it is, it is a big number.
Just want to make sure, give recognition to, you know, part of this program is to make sure that we're drawing a correlation between the federal funds that we receive and locally grown. First major part of that is planning the menus, and Anthony Gomino, who is our menu planner, cannot be here tonight. I want to make sure that he gets recognition for putting together a great menu, sourcing a lot of the local products. And then, Kancy is our social media expert, so she kind of gets the information out, so I want to make sure to give a shout out to those two. They really deserve all the credit, so.
Thank you, Ian, for everything you did.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yeah. And that's.
Item five is Executive Hires. Recognition of the new principal for Sampson Howard Elementary School, Dr. Ward.
Good evening. So, it is my pleasure to recognize the new principal of Sampson Howard Elementary, Ms. Crystal Thomas. So, you want to come on up? So, Ms. Thomas has been at Scott Elementary for 11 years now. She was three years as an AP, my AP, and then she's been the principal at Scott Elementary the last eight years. She was instrumental in getting the campus certified, or I guess it's not certified, it's accredited, as a PYP campus, which is part of the International Baccalaureate Strand, the elementary strand part of it, which is going to be beneficial when she moves to Sampson Howard, because that's going to be a fine art school, and she has that experience in starting a program on a campus. And so, we couldn't think of anyone better to open Sampson Howard than Mrs. Thomas. So, you don't have to approve her. She's just making a lateral move, but I told her she didn't have to talk, but I've kind of lied because I'm going to ask her if she wants to. Would you like to say something?
Keep it quick. Because I was told I did not have to talk today. I just want to thank everybody so much for just the vote of confidence in being given this opportunity. I don't take it lightly. I'm so excited for the opportunity to really build something from the ground up, and there's the magic that's going to occur next year when we open, and we get to serve our kiddos with amazing programs, and I just look forward to what the next few years have in store, and I'm just truly, truly grateful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Awesome.
And Crystal, before you shake hands, I just, first of all, I noticed you're wearing Sampson Howard colors. Yes. So, a couple of things. One, I want you to know I'm proud of you. I really am. You have worked so hard, and you have done such a great job in this school district. And I'll say in front of them what I said to your staff, you know, when you see people make a change, you know, it's heartbreaking, but the thing that makes this sweet is if they stay in the same district and they continue to serve Temple children, and that's what Crystal's doing. And I'll tell you, that, that right there makes us all happy to know that you're still serving Temple ISD. And also, before you shake hands, we would love for you to introduce your family to the board, because we know that you share a lot of her time with us, and we know it takes a lot of time out of the home, and there's a lot of sacrifices made. I see her kiddos all the time when I go to Scott. Yes, I see you over there. But, Crystal, if you want to introduce them real quick?
So, I have my husband, Sean. My oldest son will be going to fifth grade, Miles, and then my youngest son will be going to third grade, Felix. And the big question today is, do we get to stay with the after-school or the new school? So, we're very excited. We drove by Sampson Howard way out of town and told the boys that's where we're going to go, so every single person they talked to. So, next year, we're going to a new school, and my mom's going to be at a new school, and I get to go with her. So, there's, we're on our first two transfers right there.
I hope they're approved.
But I really could not do what I do without Sean. He's always there, always willing to pick up the slack when I have things I have to do at work. And my boys are always there, just being amazing young men, and so, I'm so grateful. And I'm grateful to be in Temple. I told you, there's nowhere else I'd want to go, and so, people that are driving, I'm happy to be here.
Item six is the Board Presence Report. First item, consideration for approval of certification of unopposed candidates for District Three, Four, and Five. This does require a motion to approve?
Motion for approval.
Motion by Ms. Suarez.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor, signify by saying a aye. Those opposed, the same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you. Item C is Future Items Discussion. Board members, any items you wish to discuss? There is one item I have in front of you. You'll have the Guidelines for School Board Honorees. If you could please review that. It's not, does not require a board approval, but, and let Dr. Ott or myself know by the end of the week how you feel about that, if there's any changes, anything may be made. Okay. And Item D is Important Dates, and Dr. Ott?
Okay. Trustees, I only have a few items here. Tomorrow is Tasty Tuesday is kicking back up over at the Culinary Arts Facility over in our Career Tech Center, and that's from 11:30 to 12:30. This Thursday, we have a School Board Retreat Team Building, and it is at the Rec Center, 9:00 AM. I think you have some instructions in front of you somewhere.
It's in our packets.
It's in your packets. Monica has it highlighted with the address, and I would just tell you in short, dress for the mess, and it will be fun, and we'll leave it at that. You know, sometimes you have to guess a little bit what's going on here, okay? This Saturday is the TISD Job Fair. If you want to stop by, it's at Temple High School from 9:00 to 11:00. If you have any time, it'd be good to go by and see our HR department and principals and maybe some prospective candidates for the school district. And then, you see our Standard Policy Committee, which is the 27th, and then Facilities is the 28th, and then we have a holiday, the 29th, which is a Friday. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Our next item, Item Seven, is Consent Items. We have Items A through F2. What is the pleasure of the board to deal with these?
I make a motion that we review all, approve all of, A, 7A through F2 altogether.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Gaines.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Like, sign to oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item Eight is Action Items. A, Human Resources. Dr. Ward. Item One, Consideration for Approval of the 2024-2025 Senior Leadership Team Contracts.
Good evening again. So, in your packet, you should have a list of the senior leadership team names with their contract years, and we are offering them another two-year non-certified contract. And so, that would be Dr. Adams, Mr. Kent Boyd, Mr. Eric Hagerberg. That one's questionable. You might want to talk about that one first. Since he's not here, I'm going to give him a hard time. Me, Christine Parks, Brandy Stanford, and Vance Willis. And so, this is an action item.
Members, any questions for Dr. Ward? It does require approval?
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank y'all for the work y'all did, too.
And I want to echo Mr. Posey. Today, during our senior leadership team meeting, Brandy led us in an exercise, leadership activity where we basically went through, it's one of those, you know, inventories where you answer questions and it kind of tells you, hey, here's what type of person you are. I guess I'm trying to sum it up a little bit. As I'm looking at mine, and then I'm hearing everybody else talk about their results, it makes, it makes a lot of sense to me why I believe I have a really good team, because my lowest area was, you know, for the most part, their strengths. And so, the complement of the team is why things go. And I'll tell you, for me personally, there's, there are a lot of superintents that do not have the opportunity to do the things that I have to do, you know, out in the community and among students and that kind of thing. But the reason I'm able to do those things for the community and for families and so forth is because these folks here are doing what they are doing internally, and that, I can't even, I can't begin to tell you how important that is. So, I'm grateful to all of you, and thanks for agreeing to be here another two years. Appreciate it.
Again, I echo, the board echoes the same comments, too. Thank y'all. All right. Item B is Academics. Dr. Adams, no items tonight? Okay. Item C is Facility Operations. Mr. Boyd, go. One item, consideration to approve facilitate at lease a real property to Central Texas Foresee, a Head Start program of Temple Texas, subject to final lease approval by both parties. Mr. Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Posey. Thank you, board. As you all know, we are in the process of selling the Dixon property. Dixon has housed the local Head Start program for several years. Prior to that, the program was housed at Meredith Dunbar, and it's been in various places throughout the district through the years. Central Texas Foresee is actually the entity that operates our Head Start programs here in Temple, and because they will no longer be able to utilize that Dixon space long-term, they'll still utilize it through this summer, but because they cannot long-term, they are looking for options for a long-term solution, and preferably, they would like an option that would be a forever home, if you will, and so, they would not have to look at moving in the future. So, to that end, the administration has discussed some possible options with the Board Facilities Committee, and we've been talking about this for a little bit, for a little while, some different options that might work, and the most viable option identified by both parties would involve Central Texas Foresee entering into a long-term lease agreement to construct a standalone facility on district-owned property across the street to the west of Meredith Dunbar. And we own some lots on that side, just to the west side of the auditorium on the Meredith Dunbar campus. So, obviously, there's a lot to work through, and we have already been in contact with our legal counsel, with, leading us through this process. And there are several issues that legal counsel has said need to be addressed by us, by both parties, as we work through this. And so, at this point, we're still gathering information. There's some things that we need to work through and talk about and make sure that long-term, this really works for both. But at this point in time, Foresee has requested, Central Texas Foresee has requested that the district take formal action of some type to demonstrate and solidify intent, so that leadership with Foresee can investigate federal funding opportunities for any potential construction project. And they've done something similar, I know, in Colleen and in Harker Heights area, so this is not exactly the same. No two situations usually are, but there's a lot of similarities. So, what happens tonight, and it's important to note, that the resolution that we bring to you tonight, approval of that does not commit the district to any action now or in the future, other than to formally state that the district will actively explore and facilitate the possibility of entering into a lease with Central Texas Foresee. If the administration ultimately determines that such a lease is appropriate and beneficial to the district and legal counsel, most importantly, concurs, then the board would need to actually consider a lease at another point in time. So, what you're doing tonight, if you should approve this resolution, is to express formal intent, and that allows us to continue moving forward with our legal counsel, and I believe it aids you all in being able to take some steps to move forward. And that's Janelle Frazier. That's why I keep looking at her, Janelle Frazier, with Central Texas Foresee is with us tonight. So, do you all have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Boyd?
I'd just say, speaking behalf of the board, we're excited about this possibility, and we're committed to making this work, if at all possible. And so, just, this is a great venture, I believe, between both organizations, and it'll be great at the location right across from Meredith Dunbar, truly where it serves the needs, and this, it's exciting, and we are truly committed to helping make this happen, so.
We are, and we'll continue to work through that and see what we can find.
See if we can find the way to make it, but.
To be specific, there are eight lots that we own, that we own where the former TE Dixon stood.
Yes. It'd be a great asset to Temple, I mean, to the, to the community and to the area of town, too, and utilize it, put it back in educational purpose.
Okay. Members, any questions? It does require approval?
No for approval.
Motion by Ms. Suarez.
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign to oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Thanks, Janelle.
Can I raise my hand? Yes.
Come up here.
And while you're walking up there, let me just congratulate you for the HEB Award.
Yes.
Again, we're one of the finals.
You're one of the finals, but that is still a really good thing, Janelle, so congratulations.
Thank you. A lot of people don't know what we do, but HEB figured it out, and Dr. Ott and Kent have listened to me long enough. They're figuring it out, and we are a preparatory place for low-income children getting ready for TISD. And we are committed to the work we do. They don't give us a lot of money for marketing, so a lot of people don't know about us, but this opportunity to be in East Temple, to put a building that is a pretty good-looking building, that is permanent, it's not a, it's not one of those modular things, it's a Rock and Mueller building. And the reason that I'm going this direction, I think I need to explain just a little bit to the board. We even looked at the possibility together of y'all. a lease with Central Texas 4C. If the administration ultimately determines that such a lease is appropriate and beneficial to the district and legal counsel, most importantly, concurs, then the board would need to actually consider a lease at another point in time. So, what you're doing tonight, if you should approve this resolution, is to express formal intent. And that allows us to continue moving forward with our legal counsel. And I believe it aids you all in being able to take some steps to move forward. And that's Janelle Frazier. That's why I keep looking at her, Janelle Frazier, with Central Texas 4C is with us tonight. So, do you all have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Boyd?
I'd just say, speaking behalf of the board, we're excited about this possibility and we're committed to making this work, if at all possible. And so, just, this is a great venture, I believe, between both organizations. And it'll be great. The location right across from Meredith Dunbar, truly where it serves the needs. And this, it's exciting. And we are truly committed to helping make this happen. So...
We are. And we'll continue to work through that and see what we can find.
See if we can find the way to make it, but...
To be specific, there are eight lots that we own, that we own where the former TE Dixon stood.
Yes. It'd be a great asset to Temple, I mean, to the, to the community and to the area of town, too. Utilize it, put it back in educational purpose.
Okay. Members, any questions? It does require approval?
Move for approval.
Motion by Ms. Suarez.
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thanks, Janelle.
Can I add something?
Yes.
I'm up here.
And while you're walking up there, let me just congratulate you for the HEB Award.
Yes. Again, we're one of the finals.
You're one of the finals, but that is still a really good thing, Janelle. So, congratulations.
Thank you. A lot of people don't know what we do, but HEB figured it out. And Dr. Ott and Kent have listened to me long enough. They're figuring it out. And we are a preparatory place for low-income children getting ready for TISD. And we are committed to the work we do. They don't give us a lot of money for marketing, so a lot of people don't know about us. But this opportunity to be in East Temple, to put a building that is a pretty good-looking building, that is permanent, it's not a, it's not one of those modular things. It's a Rock and Mueller building. And the reason that I'm going this direction, I think I need to explain just a little bit to the board. We even looked at the possibility together of y'all giving it to us. But what that does is it takes away the donation of that space that I need to be able to convert to pull down federal dollars because it's an 80/20 match. And on an $8 million program, it's hard for me to come up with $1,007 cash money. So, they let us use donation to match those federal dollars coming into Bell County. And I want them coming in here because the need is great. It's much greater than we can serve. But we, we keep hacking away at it and trying to grow a little bit as we do it. So, I'm very thankful to Kent and Dr. Ott for being amenable to looking at this with us. And for the Facilities Committee to say, yeah, sounds like a good thing. And for you to be excited, you have no idea how excited I am. So, thank you very, very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, we're partners and we're looking for any way we can do to make this happen. It'd be great for the community and for the kids. All right.
I guess I could shake all of the hands, but I'm going to shake this one.
Shake, yeah. That's a good one to shake.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Item D is finance. Mrs. Stanford.
Item one, consideration and action with respect to order authorizing the issuance of unlimited tax bonds established in sales parameters, authorizing the execution of a bond purchase contract, and a paying agent retrostar, approving an official statement, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject.
Thank you.
All that...
Thank you. So, as you may well know, we are in the middle of trying to issue our latest 64.8 million that was authorized by voters back in, in spring of 2022. And this is the next step. I have asked Jennifer Ritter, our financial advisor, to go over just a few details with you guys because we are set to go out for pricing on Monday, if you guys will authorize us to issue the last remaining bonds. And at your place, as you should have a four-page document to kind of go with. Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Jennifer Ritter with Specialized Public Finance. We're the district's financial advisor. A very brief presentation here. What we're proposing today is something called a delegation pricing, where the board delegates authority to the CFO or superintendent to price on your behalf. The benefit of that is that you don't have to price on a board meeting day. You can price the best day in the market. For example, we had looked at pricing next Wednesday, but with the Easter holiday coming up the following week, we tried to, to move that to the best day. And Monday was a little bit better. You have more attention from investors. So, the flexibility of having the delegation, delegation allows us to pick a better day. So, I'll briefly outline this presentation here that was passed out to you all. Interest rates have continued to improve since probably the end of last year November timeframe. Obviously, they've gone up quite a bit, but they have been coming down considerably since we hit our high point. In this graph here, you can see we're on the far right-hand side, this green mountain peak-looking line. And it says here in that graph, or the box, I should say, last line from the bottom, in the last year, interest rates have been higher 71% of the time. So, we are hitting a very favorable time in the market for the past year. But certainly, I don't see any need to wait, even though the Fed has said they do intend to start lowering interest rates. That keeps getting pushed back till later in the year and the market's starting to kind of slow down as a result of that. So, I don't think that waiting benefits you. There's not actually a lot of supply in the market. So, getting out when people are looking for investments to make in high-quality bonds is probably more to your advantage than waiting until later in the year. On the next page here, we did go out and get the rating updated from Standard &amp; Poor's. This is in draft form. It's usually got graphics and other things in it. But they sent it out last week. Obviously, your staff looked at it today and it was published later on this afternoon after we put this together. Nothing has changed from the content in here. So, they did affirm the AA minus. Of course, these carry the permanent school fund guarantee with the AAA. So, you will sell at the state's AAA guarantee, which is the highest rating that you can have. So, we expect very favorable interest rates, but that AA minus is very strong. Credit to your CFO for putting together a very thorough package. They had no questions following the call that we had with them week before last. Very thorough, very good presentation. That helps with the management score as well. So, there are certain things that you can control and certain things that you can't. But obviously, being prepared, having the information is something that you can control. And you get credit for being so well organized and having the planning and everything else in place. So, that's 100% kudos to you guys. One thing I want to highlight here, and you can look at this at your, at your leisure when you have a chance to do so. But on the last page, it does say under the outlook, the downside scenario, they say they could lower the rating if you cannot maintain strong reserves or if you have to go in and pull from fund balance. That's not saying you can't spend from fund balance, but if there's a history of every year drawing down that fund balance and not replenishing it, that could be something that could affect the rating. So, something to keep in mind. Doesn't control what you want to do, but I just want to point that out. And they say they could increase the rating or raise it from the AA minus to a AA if you were able to reduce your overall net debt to levels that they consider on par with other districts in the state that are higher rated. So, that would be the AA category or higher. For a district of your size, having a AA minus is a very strong rating category. So, I don't think that you have too much debt by any means. And then actually, with the program that you have in place as well, opportunities to pay off debt as they become available is something that you've availed yourself of in the past and hopefully will be able to continue to do. So, that'll help bring that debt down even when you have to issue for these projects to finish out the program. So, look at that when you have a chance. I won't read the whole thing. But the last page here I want to highlight is the timeline. Again, the rating was assigned, the AA minus was assigned last Friday. And then today, assuming that you decide to move forward with the approval of the delegation award, that'll kick us off to be able to come in next Monday and price the bonds on your behalf. When that happens with the underwriting syndicate, that's when it's sort of set in stone. Either the CFO or the superintendent at that point will sign off with your permission, using their discretion, of course, if it's within the parameters that you've set. And at that point, we will have to go through the process and close with the Attorney General. But all the terms will be set as of next Monday if you decide to move forward, assuming nothing happens in the market between now and then that would ask us to sort of pause or wait. Because again, with the delegation, you do have that discretion should the market turn between now and Monday. We could, we could pull it and wait. You have a year with this delegation. So, after a year, if you decide not to do it, it expires, we have to come back to and get approval again. Certainly, we hope to be able to sell this within a year. We hope to be able to sell it within a week. The parameters are that we can't sell more than 64.8 million, which is the remaining authorization that you have from the 2022 election. You can't have a maturity or a final term past 8/1 of 2054. So, it can't go past 30 years. If we can do shorter, we will do shorter. And that, again, the CFO or the superintendent can act on your behalf to sign if those parameters are met. So, happy to answer any questions. I think that you're hitting the market at a good time. Angela Avia and Bart Fowler from McCall, Parkers, and Horton, the district's bond attorneys, are here as well and can speak to the order should you have questions on that.
Members, any questions for Jennifer, for team, or for Brandy? This does require approval?
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Myers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. The ayes have it. The motion passes. Just thank you. And Jennifer and Bart, Angela, thank you so much for your work on this and also your past work, too. Y'all have been, again, a great team member with TISD on the pass with our bonds. So, thank you for your work. Item E is student services. And Mr. Hagerberg's not here. We don't have any items tonight. Item F is board committee reports. First one, Facilities Committee meeting minutes, February 29th, 2024. And Mr. Gaines?
Thank you, Mr. Posey. The meeting was called already at 4:04 p.m. Mr. Ward presented a bid information and recommendation guaranteed maximum price for renovation and construction of Bonham Middle School. The committee unanimously approved the recommendation. Mr. Ward also presented pricing for the refurbishment of elevators at Travis, Lamar, and the Ninth Grade Center to improve durability, reliability, and safety. The committee unanimously approved the recommendations. The committee saw a presentation on construction plans for additions and renovations to Garcia, Ray Allen, Kennedy, Powell, and Scott. Finally, the committee took a tour of Sampson Howard to see the progress of construction projects. Projects is still on schedule and trending under budget, which is awesome. The meeting was adjourned at 5:34 p.m. Our next meeting will be held, I don't think I have it...
March 28th, 2024.
March 28th, 2024 at 4:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. On the Policy Committee meeting, which would have been held February 28th, 24th, the meeting was canceled. Our next committee meeting, next committee meeting is Wednesday, March 27th, 2024 at 4:00 p.m. With no further items, we are adjourned tonight. Thank you very much for attending.